All right, are we ready to go? Excellent, it's four p.m. On Tuesday, August 6th, and I'll call the meeting of the board of supervisors for the side of the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion by supervisor keeper, seconded by Georgensen to approve the agenda as presented. And now those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion secured. Item two, public comment. Is there anyone listening on the phone line who'd like to make a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to item three, which is review action regarding approval of the June, July 26th and July 29th meeting.
Just had one question at the bottom of July 29th that says no action will be taken regarding the first reading amendment to ordinance. So we'll do two more, just like that, and that'll be it, or?
Haven't done any meetings yet.
Right, so I wondered, it said the first reading. So did we complete the first reading? I didn't think so.
Nope.
Okay, so no action will be taken because we didn't agree it.
On your agenda for this evening's meeting, there was an agenda item, so that's why I put that there.
I get it.
Art had said we won't be doing that, but
I understand.
I put it there just to have that placard because it was an agenda item, but it is on the agenda for this evening's meeting.
I understand, I just
Yeah, I did do a couple of corrections, I had Scott Hines' name, last name spelled incorrectly, and I had a reference spell wrong, I think, so it's two little things.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by supervisor Georgensen, and seconded by keeper to approve the minutes of the board of the June, July 26th and the 29th. Supervisor minutes, further discussion. Any comments, anyone listening on the phone? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item four, review action regarding approval of plans. I looked over the plans, I didn't see anything that stuck out to me to be unusual.
I also agree.
I make a motion to approve the plans.
I'll second.
Motion by supervisor keeper, and seconded by Georgensen to approve the plans as presented. Further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion secured. Item five, updates on various board's commissions activities since the last meeting.
That was part of the EMS meeting yesterday, I attended via phone. See results of that, but it's on the agenda, I'll go more into that later. Other than that, if I had anything.
I attended Main Street Board meeting at the Chamber of Commerce. They got the ball party in the park. I had their last one on Friday, last week of the year. Talked a bit about process of the progress of Main Street, with the new curb and gutter, and we paid in, I think next month sometime, I'm, so that's all I had on screen. I like both of you, I can imagine you've got a lot of phone calls, if you did, I did as well, both pro and con, they
I did get those.
We had
What is the base of the policy, you guys?
I even had a personal business.
I
People are letting their opinion be known, so that really was the center of my work for this week.
Item six, review and action regarding emergency number three, open ditch project payout number nine.
I never thought to ask Tyler if he was able to attend the meeting, about busy with data center. Having to report on any time on it. This is for $24,300. On the last page. For mobilization.
Will they come on the ditch? Has anyone been there?
It's been five days since I drove past there, I did see him working on the east side of March Avenue. They were, looked like they were pulling roots or something, they're out in field ways, I couldn't see for sure.
Okay.
But you know, it's changed dramatically, and it's hard to tell for me without walking out there and talking to them, but it looks like they're nearing.
They're doing bank, we're going to bank trade, I'm assuming, and getting ready to cede it maybe for some point in time.
Be my assumption, yeah.
And there's water in the ditch, I was too there by the market doors.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's all the way, there's water, starting at T-38 there, Lancer Avenue.
I'll make a motion to approve emergency number three, open ditch project payout.
Oh, that guy right there somewhere is $24,300.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made by supervisor Georgensen, seconded by keeper. Motion was made by supervisor keeper and seconded by Georgensen to approve AAP number nine, and the emergency district number three, open ditch project, in the amount $24,300. Further discussion. Any comments, anyone listening on the phone? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item seven, review action regarding hiring of a secondary road shop slash sign foreman, Jason?
Hey, so we had Joe Cross officially retired July 31st in the shop, sign foreman position, and I held interviews, and after having interviews and going and kind of reviewing everything, I decided for my recommendation would be to hire Nate O'Neil to the position of shop slash sign foreman. He's one of our current mechanics, so he knows our processes, and I think he would be a good fit for the job. Starting that's the, that's the form of, I guess, wage is, that, that old form to have, so. And I was planning to have him start those duties on Monday, on next Monday, he's got, he's in the middle of some repairs that I'd like him to kind of focus on finishing, but I kind of talked to him, he's, we're still gonna need his help in shop until we can get another mechanic.
What's his name again?
Nate O'Neil.
Nate O'Neil, okay.
Your plan to
Yes, and then, and then, yeah, my plan would be to backfill his position, in the mechanic position, so we can get our mechanics back to full staff then, and can keep our repairs going. So that was, my intention would be to post that opening tomorrow morning, and run it for two weeks. So that'd be August 31st, it would close, and then I'll hold, then I'll hold interviews again, do the process again, so.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve hiring secondary road shop foreman, Nate O'Neil.
Second. I have a motion by supervisor Georgensen, and seconded by keeper to approve the hiring of secondary roads department, Nate O'Neil.
O'Neil.
Now, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion secured.
Thank you guys. Good luck later.
We'll skip down to nine for a second. Review action regarding the Omitel invoice for communications tower project.
So this one. Oh, this kind of has two parts to it, one part is $2,000, the other part is $5,000. Well, the $7,000. The, the $2,000 is remember you did that agreement, that you'll have to pay one, that 911, it will end up paying $1,000 per month for each of the circuits?
Yeah.
And so the reason I wanted it on the agenda is wanna pay that part of it out of project funds, or do you want 911 to pay it? And what my thoughts were, is that since this is kind of the kickoff of all of it, that maybe this time we pay this $7,000 bill with project funds, appropriate to use all of that, and I'll have to do with the project. And then the subsequent months covering paid out of 911.
Let me get the monthly cost, is that what you're saying? Is it $1,000 a month?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me, that makes sense, I guess.
I agree.
I think there's the funds are fine, I think they're doing fine, but unbalanced with the bond proceeds. That will be fine, and down the road, you can decide if you have bond proceeds left, if you want to pay any other bills, like this, if there are proceeds. So that would be my thoughts are, you can make your motion so that the whole $7,000 bill would be paid out of, paid out of.
Take it outward.
But the Communications Tower Project Fund where the bond proceeds are at, it, you could just say the Communications Tower Project.
I'll make a motion to approve the Omitel invoice for communications project of $7,000.
Second.
Project. I have a motion by supervisor keeper, and seconded by Georgensen to approve the $7,000 charge on Omitel out of communications project, Communications Tower Project Fund. Is there a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Item ten, noted resignation of the dispatcher. If the meeting is
This is for Sean Renshaw.
Yeah.
Has accepted a position with another dispatcher. Or like
He's been a dispatcher for nearly a decade.
Yeah. Came over from the city office.
That's a very nice letter, says finally if there's anything I can do to ensure a smooth and efficient handover process, please do not hesitate to let me know.
Yeah, I thought that, so, great. Good offer, good letter. You know, completely within terms, it sounds right.
It is, I think he that's for him.
Yeah.
Is, is John short more than one, with this resignation, or he can show more than one dispatcher now?
Right now, he's just dispatcher.
Just for sure.
Yep, then he's, applications, a few applications have come in. I would think that potentially, that could be enough.
Was there conversation about part-time dispatcher at full-time?
There was a bunch of time, but there's, but he that budget discussion, he told you guys he would rather have the wage increase rather.
Okay, we'll go back to item eight, which is discussion regarding emergency medical services tax levy. I wanted to put this generally on the agenda because it kind of takes stock of where we're at. Had ambulance commission make a recommendation, and yesterday, the advisory committee made a recommendation, of course, the board supervisors had a recommendation to the board of the board of trustees, we'll talk about those a little later, but, so Jim, supervisor Georgensen, tell us what the advisory council
I did this email from Keith Star, and it kind of explains, take one, pass it down. Kind of explains where they were coming from, I was on the telephone, the conversation started out this, more than tax rate of 47 cents. As, you know, it was pretty quiet, and as the conversation opened up, many of them in the room decided that was not enough to properly fund the ambulance in the future, as well as get funding to Green, North Springs, and all around. So if you look towards the bottom of the front page, it's $670,000 asking that for levy amount of tax, sorry, let me go back up. The per required items for length of five years, tax from real estate at Valerian dollar amount up to $670,000, but not dollars, maybe not, hopefully not, but the tax rate is 69 cents per thousand, and they want that 69 in case we experience rollbacks, which would essentially standard all correctly with lower property values, which would bring in less tax money for and they want five years for chance to review and reasonable time for and like the property tax versus property tax and income tax conversation. combination. And then again, at the bottom of the page, $670, they want $440 for AMR. $10,000 the county has paid to Green at North Springs presently. $50,000 by the Green Ambulance Service and Mount Rock First Responders. $20 for the repairs utilities, sector of the ambulance area in Central City. Immediate needs is $520,000. And you can see the figures talking about based on inflation of 5.3%. It gets up to, in year five, it reaches up to $671,282 according to these figures. Year one is $546,000. Also, the reason for I think there's some discussion in Des Moines that there maybe won't be income tax. I know it's significantly different than what some of the numbers have been in the past, but they they strongly believe this is where we need to be in order to go forward smoothly now. If other funding comes through, with perhaps a hospital or something else, you could draw that back and out there, they're asking. Kind of in a nutshell, that's what I've got from that meeting, and Keith did a very nice job of putting this together for me to reference.
I know that no counties are identical, but I did listen in on Lola County Board of Supervising Meeting this morning, and they discussed their EMS. Lola County has a population of about 14,000 people, and Troy County is about 15,000, roughly 10,000. May need to attach a little bit of 14 cents, so $150,000 for the and I don't I'm not, of course, I don't understand what the structure is exactly, but that's a huge difference. What we're looking at and what they're doing. They, they have a maximum to up 75 cents, but we started at 14 cents. There's 150,000, that's an employee, and a couple employees and vehicles maybe, I think they currently have one, and they're talking about being another vehicle, I'm assuming that's an ambulance. Maybe, maybe we're not comparing apples to apples, but county population wise, they're not
That's it, yeah, I wonder probably can things completely low, I mean, I at the 670, and I think that's pretty high, I wonder how they're making 150 work.
I don't have to beat it.
Is there something else coming with it?
Somehow they are.
Back when, some with else, or?
I think so, and that, that, that didn't come up on there.
Didn't come up?
It's not their population.
Well, population population isn't that much smaller, but probably it's only 1,000 people less. 14,000 this, this, no, so it was, they're a little over 14,000, for the 2020 census, they were a little over 14,000 in population, they were a little they don't have, Lola County seat isn't obviously as large as Troy County's. Whole population is this is something else that got my attention.
Yeah, it's interesting, I was just trying to Google the population of Lola County.
1,000.
Oh, it is 14.
2,000.
Yeah, 269, yeah, so it's pretty close.
Not, not half as many.
Yeah, right, right.
And they have the same level of
Yeah, I think it's based on the house, and I'm hard to find.
No paid employees, I suppose.
They do have
Their full-time rep.
I think that's only 100.
Yeah.
Two, two paid employees, I think. Or one, and they were looking for a second, maybe. Makes you wonder why so much we want here.
Well
They don't have any hospitals in Lola County. And been waiting a long time for a city vehicle.
I was hoping a voting member could come in. Fine, but they're all at their jobs, or whatever, and but, yeah, that's I get this animus cross that they all agreed on, that's I don't think there's any dissenting, and sometimes on the phone it's dissenting vote, but I, I don't think there was, so the those are the relying on to do the legwork, and if they walk the steps, they goes on with this, and that, that's what they, they didn't want to come short. Same time they want to be able to carry this thing to five years, and possibly, like everything else, possibly, they wouldn't need the full amount every year. Especially if funded from another source, or partly funded.
Just noticing, there's no commitment from the White County Medical Center Board of Trustees in this group. Don't think they were planning on it, because it's not for sure yet. But I think there was conversation that stated, you want that money comes through, then we backed out of the amount that they were requesting. Just, so what happens? Yes, the EMR contract in the first year pair them for 40,000 plus 5 cents. I would assume I would only assume that that amount of general fund, that the city would have to do something like this.
Tax is 670,000. The tax they're asking for is 670,000.
So, it could go, okay, so if you go all the way up to 670,000, they could pay up to that amount. These other numbers are pretty stable then.
Obviously, that's the, on the first page, the bottom, yeah. Well, yeah, I think they want to get 10,000 presently is going to Green at North Springs. 50 divided by Green and Amber, and North Springs. I, I think North Springs is really I've never looked at their ambulance, I I don't have to tell you one from a bad one, but the reports I'm getting, theirs is getting near the end of its usable life. Yeah, they want to make sure that they can get something to Green, or to North Springs, excuse me.
So it would be 50,000 divided then?
Well, I suppose that would be up to the EMS committee, but I, my guess would be they're talking 30,000 for upgrading ambulance for North Springs, that's the number that's kind of tossed around.
That's solid, it's just there, no, there's going to be other processes with it.
Yeah.
So, I guess I didn't, Keith is sure of both the ambulance commission?
That's correct.
So this would allow for the payment amount to $670,000 in any year for five years, and that's what the pay for an increase in the EMR contract, I think we, everybody's talking about 5% seem pretty low compared to what some of the people talk about, so I, I think I understand this.
This is the intention of starting their own service.
Uh, no, there's no, no conversation of that at this time. Was in the past, you know, but
All right, any further comment, any further conversation about this, part of it, anyone like to comment on this agenda item, A, emergency advisory council recommendation? Okay, hearing none, the ambulance commission recommendation, that was the one that preceded this, and that one had the that 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, anything above the levy amount, which was moved up to 450. Think above that would be split 1/3, 1/3. Think above that would be split one third, one third, one third between the city and the county and the medical center. So that was the primary difference there. So really the ambulance commission part of it, the recommendation came from the advisory committee and they have to change what the ambulance commission, that's fine. So this is the latest recommendation. I'd be correct. So the ambulance commission is, that's the second one, that's kind of off the board. Please. Keith had sent me an email that we were waiting until they had a meeting, till the supervisors met with the medical center board of trustees. Put that off until, until that time. So the third part of this is the board supervisor proposal to the medical center. That's the one that we've here. All of that was. Still have not heard back. All we've done, we've been in touch, we've done at those, we've been in touch with Gloria to get the date set for that meeting. We haven't really heard. Haven't confirmed a date other than the chair of the committee suggested we meet on August 19th, the next regular meeting. Can't meet to them. I guess we can't meet to them, but the timing of this is have to have something on your ballot question that approved by August 26th. Would you say Gloria would have to?
28th is the last day you can submit at 5 o'clock to 28th, but you have to do so by resolution with the ballot. 28th is your last day to do that. So 25th would be your regular Monday meeting if you're ready for something.
Whatever proposal we may improve last time. This, of course, does require contributions from the medical center to continue the services being provided and in that spreadsheet, I, I don't know if you have to look at it. We kind of put it on the table last week. Time we played that one, there's clearly not money right for increases in AMR contracts all the way up to health, the only projection we had in here was the last one was 550,000 from 400. So if that happened, then there would still be 128,000 dollars. It's the primary difference in those and we were at.
Yeah, the proposal for the hospital was.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll see when that happens, what's going to happen there. I really want to see something on the ballot after all that we're, everybody's done. It's a very important question for the county's future, the medical center's future and all the constituents we represent. So it's going to be a question of where are we going to put something on the ballot? Or if some point in time, please know that process of putting it on the ballot comes from the board supervisors only. That's, that's not a major recommendation. And
Eric, can there be more than one question on the ballot for the? I was approached by a Low County citizen that suggests we should put three questions in.
I'll pick one of the three.
Yeah.
And we would need to have that question in fact.
Could be. Dean, that you just, would you like to comment, Dean? We're here, you.
It's so bad. It's kind of, because the time span is so short, I believe it'd probably be a good idea to submit some of these questions for consideration. You know, what's the question going to be? If one of these two or maybe another one is chosen, we can't really wait forever. Have to kind of work with someone to get the proper question. So that would be something we want to start doing.
Probably need to have that meeting with the hospital board. And then.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's kind of, soon as we know that, then we know.
Yeah.
Yes, no?
Yeah.
They found their offer or something like that. So really what I'm accomplishing that, the other thing is this proposal made that we refer is essentially a to get funding for AMR for five years. I do believe, I did a lot of work, talked to consultants about this, but I think municipal animal service question is probably the way we're going to have to go in this county. I don't think we're ready for it. That's my personal opinion right now, but I think we're headed that way. And if this proposal of ours to be viewed that light, that this is an opportunity provide needed funding and keep that maintained. And yet at the end of this one, we've had anywhere from 128,000 dollars to 211 dollars. Based on any of those estimates, those are all just estimates.
Yeah. Then I'll answer this question, but let's just say we take 30,000 over to North Springs. They buy an ambulance and whatever reason they, they can't staff it. Things change, people move. They put ambulance.
The money to them, they own it.
Okay.
To decide how they're going to disposition. Assets.
I'm not indicating they're in a position like that at my meetings, but
Well, that's really the part of this discussion. When soon we get a meeting scheduled, we'll get that opportunity to talk to them and really all I have. I mean, this is what us and want to keep bringing up because I'm really, it's something you have to do something and I, I do. Something on the ballot. Would you agree to that? Do you think that's a good idea?
Well, I, I think it needs to be on the ballot. Probably sooner than later, but it could go on 2025 ballot too.
I did.
Sure.
Something entirely different. You go on the ballot. The newly new board of supervisors would accept it to them. If it's not voted on, it's with that same advisory committee. Remain in place.
Doesn't, you have to start from zero. You have to reappoint. You have to do a new resolution with three readings before you can appoint an advisory council. You start from ground zero, just like we did this year compared to when you could potentially appoint those same members, but they start from ground zero. Chapter 428 to D. I don't know. But you'd have a good pool table.
And they'd have a good foundation to start with too. I mean, legwork, a lot of the legwork is would be done in the last all months roughly.
Difference there is this. If a levy vote is not successful, there would be no payment provided for, for services currently provided by AMR beyond the 2088. Come out of the city and the county's general front balance, pay for anything just a levy vote wouldn't be. That would be delayed very years. All right, well, we'll hopefully get a meeting soon with the hospital board and all three of us. Well, I, I thought I we do that is if you want to attend a meeting other than there's even more than one member of us attending the same meeting, we posted over here. In those guidelines that the I will probably do provision. Eric, you're not really commenting either because it's a fine line between liberating and and all of a sudden you're commenting on topics. So it was for people. All right, future agenda.
I'm author Dana Larson.
State.
And now.
Yeah, wait, please. During. Also, all right, move my supervisor keeper and second by Jorgensen to adjourn. Those who are here, say aye.
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 Your adjourn.